This woman worked for a test every day. Flash. Really tries to turn this progress. See the kind of acting as like a surrogate. Just can't be in there. So it's great. But it's because I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's not that hard. Yeah. Just get.
Super short. I tried to help. I'm gonna say.
Orange bean.
Oh, shit. And they're gonna be taxing.
I think so.
We were. I'm with Dov. So like, I think it's. I was a heat and all of a sudden we're right. That's exactly what we said. It was coming up to the last. What's that? Yes, I know. Number four. Just like I expected.
Okay.
I wasn't happy. Isn't sure. Close. Well, the other people lost, yeah.
Well, we should. You're right. There, right?
Yeah. I wish you were talking about. Then it'll be on like third street.
Well, they want to. But I'll be able to.
It will.
Okay, we will call meeting to order at six P M. Uh, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice.
Moving on to item three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Um, under item eight, I'll just give you a heads up about your September 12th meeting. So I'm not sure that's an agenda item, but.
Okay. Uh, hearing that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with that comment from planning director.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number four, public comment on non-agenda items. I don't see anyone from the public here, so we will move on to item five, approval of the minutes from the July 11th, 2024 meeting. Any comments or changes to the minutes? If not, I'll hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Motion, do we have support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Thank you. And item six, renewable energy ordinance discussion. I believe that is a staff presentation.
Well, I wasn't planning to give a presentation.
Discussion.
But just discussion, I hope most of you were able to watch that webinar. It was just offered a week or two ago by two staff members from the Graham Institute of Sustainability at the University of Michigan. And I've seen both of these speakers before on this topic. Before it was, before Public Act 233, they were educating communities on regulating wind and solar, but this battery energy storage, I don't think they call it battery energy storage at all in their approach, but that's what it is. It's a bunch of batteries in a container that hold power from the grid. Until this really became urgent somehow, this legislation moved really quickly last year and everybody was talking about wind and solar and nobody was talking about the fact that the legislation also included battery energy regulations.
Does it include any others like pumped hydro or anything like that?
No.
No, okay.
This is towards the administration's sustainability and green energy initiatives. So that's probably part of the reason it moved so quickly through the process. But here we are, we have until November of this year to, if we want, have an ordinance in place to regulate wind, solar, and battery energy storage. I don't feel that we need to worry about wind in this part of Michigan, just from the maps I've seen over the years, and I even double-checked them the other day, that we're just not a hot area for wind farms. So I don't think we'll have pressure for that, but one of the zoning administrators did field a call a couple of weeks ago from a gentleman who's putting a proposal together, a quote, to do, to design and build a battery energy facility off of Van Cal near the big substation there across the border. So it's coming, at least the battery energy storage. I know when I worked in Comstock Township, we had one developer wanting to build two pretty large battery energy facilities, but those don't really take acreage. They're able to, I think it's 400 megawatts that they're doing over two projects.
Pretty awesome.
If, you know, the township gets their ordinance language in place, and if not, then they'll just go through the Public Service Commission and get their approval. So that's what's before us. Do we want to stay silent on it and let any applicant or a solar energy system, and those are big, those take up some serious acreage? Or wind or battery energy just go straight to the state? Do we want to adopt an ordinance that's compatible with the legislation so that a developer will still come to us? Or do we want to develop an ordinance that's maybe a little more strict than the law? And then it'll be up to a developer to decide, do they want to go through our process or just go straight to the state? We think a lot of developers will want to go the local route because it'll be a lot faster for them, and time is money.
Don't you think, I mean, our solar, sorry, our solar ordinance was just recently adopted, and it did follow Michigan State and University of Michigan's proposal. And then, I would say in most regards, it is pretty close to a CREEO at this point.
Just for solar, but I think it's off on some things because they did have some guidebooks out there on solar and wind. MSU Extension and University of Michigan worked on them together, but now they're updating those to reflect the law, and they're coming out with a third standalone guidebook for battery energy storage, but it's not out yet.
Well, I definitely think we need battery. Why would, would you say not adopt any kind of wind?
I mean, we can address wind, I just don't think we'll get pressure for it. But if we're going to go to the trouble of crafting battery energy and maybe updating solar, we could have a section in there that addresses wind just in the event that a proposal is made down the road.
Would you fold them into one section or separate them into three sections?
Um, but what I crafted for the other community, it was one section. And some of the language applied to everything, and then some of it was very specific to the use, like decommissioning for solar is going to have different requirements than decommissioning for battery energy site.
Yeah. Um, I don't know that I would want us to be in a position where our default is to send them to the state. I think we should at least attempt to write compatible ordinances for all portions of the renewable energy law sector here that we, that are under consideration. Because even if wind is not something that's going to come here, if somebody decides to do it, I think we want to make sure that we're in a position to, one, capture any of those incentive credits that might come our way per megawatt of generation or storage, and two, we've got to make sure we have a little local control over the citing of it.
Well, even if we didn't have a large wind farm come, we still need to be able to regulate. What if a factory wants to put up a hundred foot?
For their own needs.
Yeah.
And we might already, but.
Would that be different, totally separate ordinances, though, outside the scope of this MPSC situation?
It would, but it's usually something you produce as part of the overall.
Okay.
Ordinance. When I was looking at wind before this, when I stopped looking at doing ordinance for wind, it was because this legislation was pending, but I didn't think that our ordinances did a good enough job to address what an individual homeowner might want to use.
Sure.
What industry might want to use. So I do think we need to address that in some way.
That's fair.
Same way that we did for solar. It went from individual home use to farms.
True. Yep. Okay.
Yeah, and just by definition, we'll distinguish someone putting solar panels on their roof all the way up to a solar farm, yeah. Or a business that just has solar panels that just feed right into the business, or they sell some back onto the grid.
Yeah, right now, we've just been treating them from a zoning standpoint, sort of as an accessory use and with little or no oversight or input. And one of the things that I ran across when I was doing my research for solar was the effect it could have on the neighbor. Typically, they're not a problem unless you get the wrong angle.
Right.
And you get the reflection off a series of those, it can be problematic.
Sure.
Any other initial thoughts from commissioners?
I wonder, Jody, maybe you can address it.
Can you turn your mic on, Scott?
I'm sorry. Um, if we could understand the state's regs, which seem to be fairly minimal, but have setbacks included in them to, I mean, if you look at battery storage, a setback 300 feet is a big one. And I don't know about wind and solar, whether there's enough in there so that the CREEO direction would work for us.
Well, you wouldn't want to go much greater than the setbacks in the, but you watched the presentation because I talked about like that might be something a community requires as a greater setback and a lower decibel reading from the outside wall of the nearest home.
Under CREEO, could we do that?
Well, no, it would be like a WIO, a workable incompatible ordinance.
Okay.
Instead of a compatible renewable energy ordinance. It'd be workable. So I mean, if you're within reason, a developer might still choose your route instead of bypassing you and going to the state. And Eagle has got grant money for communities that have an ordinance in place and a facility in their community. They're awarding money by the megawatt. And then there's the host community agreement that the legislation provides for that.
Jody, do you know on those awards, like the per-megawatt dollar award? Because there's some different funding coming like from the federal government via the EPA to the state. Is that one-time award for a project that gets off the ground, or do we not know yet? Like?
I think the way the current award is, it's for, it's one time.
Okay.
For communities that have them to encourage more communities to take this load off of the MPSC because they don't really have the expertise.
Right.
And we're still waiting for the rules. The staff of the MPC are working on them and they have draft, but they haven't been adopted by the commission yet.
I can tell you in talking with Council for Michigan Townships Association, they're steering most of their clients toward a WIO versus a CREEO. In other words, something that's workable, but would still maybe give the community a bit more protection.
Mm-hmm. And what, who determines what's a workable and what's a CREEO?
Basically, the developer.
Okay. When they decide with their feet?
What, they either decide to work with you or they say.
Go to the state.
Not you, we're going to the state.
Okay.
So workable really means push back a little bit, don't go too far because you ask for too much, they're just going to bypass you and go to the state.
So workable means they decide to stay with us. And was workable with us.
That's the way I'm reading the legislation, the way I'm reading how the act, how it will work in reality.
Okay.
And Jim, do you, did you notice during the presentation, it looked to me like even the CREEO had the option for us to put reasonable things like screening and.
There are certain things that aren't mentioned in the act that are arguably then remain within your control, and that's where, again, there's always interpretation. New legislation is always fascinating because you can get three lawyers and you can get three different readings.
Yeah, the, the recommendation was, I believe what it said was, if you're going to do a CREEO, their boilerplate was literally the, the ordinance language on its own, with nothing else added.
Yeah.
Like if you want to guarantee that it's a CREEO.
Guarantee it, yeah.
Um, any other initial questions? I've got a list of questions that we can go into if no one has any other comments right now.
Go ahead.
Um, do we know what any of our neighbors are doing with this? That was a rather, you know, large part of the webinar as far as, so, A, what are our neighboring townships and/or cities? How are they approaching this? And are there any townships that touch Oshmo that could be used for a project that would be in both jurisdictions that are zoned by the county? Have we looked into that?
I think every community we abut has its own zoning, even Elmina in Ben Bearden County. That might be the, I could see that being a community most affected if something happens here, that maybe a developer does something across Van Cal.
Okay.
Do we know that direction? What direction?
Due west.
Do we know the direction that those jurisdictions are looking?
Oh, I thought you meant direction from here. No.
That's a great answer.
No, I haven't touched base. I don't, no, I haven't yet talked to anybody else.
I think that would be worthwhile information to have. And then, Jim, I think you already touched on it, but have we done a comparison to how our, our solar policy compares to the MPSC requirements?
I checked some of the aspects of it, and I think we have a lower decibel reading, and I think we have greater setbacks than what would be in a CREEO.
Okay.
Those are the only two things I looked at. I didn't look at it in depth.
I think those are the main things in the, in the ordinance.
It was, again, my recollection, last time I looked at it, when I saw this, this come down, was that we were, we were close within two, to those two respects. And then the more I heard, initially, I thought about amending it to be a CREEO, but then I heard comments from most of the people out there in the business saying, don't do that, push back a little bit, try to protect your citizens as much as possible without giving them an incentive to go to the state. Pretty fine line.
But I almost.
Pretty fine line. It is.
Yeah. I almost wonder if it would just make sense to have a whole renewable energy section and absorb solar energy into it, add wind and battery, and so maybe tweak this.
Well, I think that would be great. We were just trying to bite it off a chunk at a time because we didn't have a planner. So.
We did what we had to do to get through, and now it's time to iterate.
And that was where we had the most fear because we did have a number of companies that had been contacting property owners regarding solar farms.
They, they do it. When I talked to farmers out in Pavilion, they said they get five letters a week, you know, or phone calls from these companies. And they act like they're going to come in in 90 days with an application, and they never hear from them again.
Never did. Yeah, we were just trying to put our finger in the dyke and say, okay, we got the big one plugged, the one that, like you said, we don't think we're a big target for wind, so we plug that hole. But now that we have a planner, yes, I think a unified renewable energy ordinance would be fantastic.
Well, I would, I would agree. My sentiments on this are that I think there's enough incentives to at least, at a bare minimum, develop a CREEO for each one of those three renewables, and I would actually like to see either, I would like to see a workable, incompatible would be the best option, I think, if it's actually workable.
My experience when I was helping Comstock Township as the developer with those two projects, they wanted to work with the community. I was sending them drafts, and I invited them to present to the planning commission. I invited other planning commissions in the county, but I think only Cooper came. I also invited representatives from the solar industry, solar energy industry to come, to look at the draft, comment on it, and present to the planning commission. So I just wanted them, you know, to make the most informed decision they could.
So we have an expert to draft our.
Oh, why am I going to remember if that was?
I mean, yeah, that, that, that sounds great if we can get feedback from industry on what is workable or what is, you know, at least we can get close.
I even had Madeline Kroll from, if you watched the webinar, she was one of the presenters because I saw her presentation at the MAP, Michigan Association of Planning Conference last year, and I invited her to come present to the planning commission, and then that legislation came down like a week later, days before her presentation, which blew up her presentation. Talked about other, other things a little bit.
The one other thing I did note, and they mentioned it in there too, I do have questions on the, I believe, the, the MPSC language is permitted, is a permitted use in all land use areas? That's the one thing I think that we would want to take a little bit closer look at as well.
I do like this suggestion. Yeah, it was one of my questions for tonight of just making it a permitted use. If we make it a special use and we're pretty much forced to approve it, why invite the public out? Then they feel disenchanted. Like, you invite me out to give comment, I give comment, and you still approved it. So making it a permitted use with conditions.
Sure.
I don't know how you feel about that, but.
I feel that, that is positive, yes.
What else you got on your list?
Um, I don't know. I did this last night way too late, so it's like.
I know what those lists look like.
Uh, I think we answered most of them. I get, I, I think that there is a lot of incentives, incentives for a developer to want to work with a township as long as the, the WIO is not too, too restrictive. Why would a developer want to alienate a community and, you know, just barge their way, their way in using the MPSC if there's an option available to work locally?
I don't know, SITC.
It's just a say. Yes, the elephant in the room.
Do we know, maybe Jim is the best answer person. Uh, do we know if there's a way to separate the fly-by-nights from the people who have the resources and the track record to have a good result, I guess?
That's a good question. I know in some activities, communities were allowed to weigh in on factors like that, specifically with regard to when they were handing out permits for marijuana.
Oh, my gosh.
Holy, I think I just had a stroke.
Sorry.
You good?
Yeah, not good.
Bless you.
Um, there was provisions for weighing somebody's financial ability. Typically, we've not done that in any other context, so I'm not certain that, I'm not certain that that could or should be a factor. I'd have to think about that one.
You know, even before they come to a township, they're in the MPSC queue, and it's a different line than getting this approval. I can't think of the term, but every new substation or power facility like that gets approval from the MPSC. I was trying to look into that the other day, but I couldn't remember the name of it. So there must be some vetting there at the state level for, before they're even going to get their, not franchise or agreement, but authority. Maybe it's a license.
Yeah.
And would consumers have regulations about who they would be willing to receive power from?
Oh, I'm sure they do.
My guess is there are regulations already, uh, because the whole energy industry is regulated by MISO, and MISO oversees all those preliminary, like there are preliminary applications and recommendations and stuff that come as part of the entire energy sector. So I would think they would have to go through a lot of hoops before they ever got here. And hopefully that would weed out any near new wells.
Hey, Jim, I got a, maybe an off-the-wall question, but they talked in that webinar a little bit about local utility or local governments that might own a utility? Do we, do you know of any charter townships that own like an electrical utility?
Uh, only up in the Traverse City area, some of the communities up there formed a consortium to, to build energy like years and years ago.
Okay.
So there are some local units that have members that sit on boards that run local power companies.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm not aware of any townships that are in that business.
I'm just curious what the model might look like. It sounded interesting. I just, there's a ton of money floating around for these things.
Hmm.
That's all. If that was an avenue for the township.
Where does the role of site plan review, because it's not like, so they talk about the difference between restrictions and conditions. So would we still be able to apply the same site plan conditions? Like, we've got stuff about you've got to put sidewalk in front of your property if you develop a commercial property or residential property in the township. Are those, would those be considered? I mean, they're not stopping the project from happening, they're just things that we require in the township to do if you develop anywhere.
I think that's where Jody's talent in drafting a workable ordinance would come into play as to, I, I anticipate you would put them through site plan like you would any other development, and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Put as many things into that that we thought wouldn't be objected to.
Right, okay.
Those are some of the gray areas that originally came up before, like, think, what can units do if they're not in the list of do's and don'ts? That's the gray area. And I don't think we've gone through site plan and tried to follow through with as many of the positive aspects of our non-motorized plan that we could, or any other type of community improvement.
I mean, you would think, you would think that if you're not imposing any more, you know, whether it they cost more or take more time or any sort of conditions or limitations on this than your normal uses you would require for, you'd think that would be considered workable because you're not requiring them to do anything different than what you would be anyone else.
I think that was a fair way to look at drafting a workable ordinance. In other words, if the developer can look at it and you can say, look, everybody else is required to do these things, we're not asking anything more of you than we would if you were putting in a factory.
Right.
Putting in a store or something.
Okay.
Makes sense to me to look at it from that perspective.
Okay.
The legislation already requires them to give, enter into a host community agreement where they give quite a bit of money to the local unit of government for public good, and then they can decide, the township board and the developer, what that might be, put it in a park or build a bike path or something with it. Get Atlantic Avenue extended, you know, good things.
Good things like that.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners on this topic?
All right, so I was tentatively going to bring you a draft in October, your first draft.
Did you get what you needed out of the discussion, Jody?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, on to item seven, the comprehensive plan, activity, and update.
Um, well, since some of you couldn't make the event, which was really well-attended, but it was a little chaotic, and so we don't even know how many people really did the activities, but I thought I would share them with you and then send them off to Sarah at Progressive to include your input. So the first activity, although it says activity three at the top, is the future land use map. And this one on the left, yeah, that pretty, that's really similar to what the future land use map now is now. We wanted the community to react to that. And the one on the.
Uh, well, since some of you couldn't make the event, which was really well-attended, but it was a little chaotic, and so we don't even know how many people really did the activities. But I thought I would share them with you and then send them off to Sarah at Progressive to include your input. So, the first activity, although it says activity three at the top, is the future land use map. And this one on the left, yeah, that pretty, that's really similar to what the future land use map now is now. We wanted the community to react to that. And the one on the left are some potential changes where some growth could occur. We wanted people to react to that and cross out, mark it up. Or if they wanted to build their own future land use map, they could flip it over. And then, that sheet of stickers, all different symbols to reflect what they saw, preservation, commercial. And to understand what the stickers are was this booklet that explained the different land uses, what we mean by community center, what we mean by neighborhood node, countryside, residential. A direction we're going with this master plan after a bunch of committee meetings is we're not gonna use the word rural. We're gonna say countryside. We feel rural's gotten a little negative or overused, and so countryside residential seemed to fit better for the west half of the township. So, I don't know if you wanted to take some time now?
I'm sorry?
Um, the committee with a few board members, staff members, progressive team.
I get it, it's that rural character, it's that second word that makes it that.
Yeah, we got rural characters.
We have characters, so.
We got urban characters too. So, I don't know if you wanna do this now or do it as your homework and get it back to me in the next couple of days? I thought we had a light agenda. I would throw this on tonight and see if you wanted to do the activity. And then, the other activity, maybe that's an easier one to do. Art. Your lookbook. And then, the other activity was goals. We crafted, these are from the master plan now, but also updated a little bit. We wanted the community members to respond to these draft goals, pick their top three and why they are important to them. And then, they thought we missed something that to add their own goal statement or even just a, a point, a word.
So, I took my family to this event and completed this activity already.
You may go then.
So, you know, what is the commission's pleasure? Do you wanna spend some time doing this? I'm fine hanging out and doing it now if you've set aside time tonight.
I already did the homework. I just don't know how to indicate on the map. If I just like one of the options, can I just indicate?
Mark it up.
Circle, circle it, draw an arrow to it with an exclamation point, however you want. The, the consultant team will take that, however you mark it up and figure out how to interpret it. If you point an arrow to it and say thumbs down, I'm pretty sure that'll make sure that they know that you don't want it.
And then, the October 15th joint meeting of all the boards will have a presentation from Progressive on all the engagement to date, where it's leading them. And then, we'll start talking about the future land use map and maybe new subareas to add, which ones maybe we don't need anymore of the five subareas in the township. And so, that should be a really good discussion, October 15th joint meeting.
Uh, Phil, to answer your question, I kinda wanna spend a little bit of time with this at my desk at home. But I did do the goals for the future piece. So, I don't know, that's just my two cents, I guess.
Do we have another meeting in two weeks, I assume?
No, that will be, oh, yeah, yes. Yeah, the one after that will be canceled for the planning conference.
Okay. So, if you've already done some of the homework, you can turn it in tonight then, I guess?
Okay.
And then, for the mapping piece, that does take a little bit of time to kinda like get your bearings and figure out what things you think might go where. Let's plan on having that turned in by our next planning commission meeting in two weeks.
Or sooner would probably be better because they're working away on this at Progressive, so.
How do you?
Monday?
Yeah, you can drop it off or take a picture with your phone and send it to me or.
You don't need the actual physical copy of the sheet.
Nope, just something digital.
Okay.
Do you want them, like, are, do you want us to name ourselves on these?
No, we should remain anonymous.
They want them to be anonymous. Otherwise, Zach Ford's political influence will have way too much.
Oh, yeah, no, I just feel like they just throw that one in the trash. Probably best to keep it anonymous.
All right. Moving on to item eight, other updates in business. Update on the township board action on ordinance 672.
That did not go forward wholly. The township board pulled out all the language regarding warehouses, distribution centers, and it was like four sections got pulled out of the ordinance because Board Member Chapman was asking me some questions that I hadn't thought about. And I said I was more comfortable pulling that, but I wanted the other language to go forward because there were people waiting for some of those other amendments to happen. But asking if I had looked into health impacts of allowing these land uses where diesel trucks might be idling if it abuts residential. And the board seemed to not be in support of allowing these uses near our higher zoning, well, I guess they're technically lower zoning districts where the densities are higher because that might be disproportionately near lower-income residents.
It's an environmental justice issue, I think.
Environmental justice, yeah. So, I, I asked for time because I hadn't looked into it yet to look into that. And there's really, I haven't had a lot of time yet, but I real quickly started looking into it, and there's not a lot of published information yet because fulfillment centers like this is pretty new land use relatively speaking. It's in the last five, 10 years, so.
I'm still having trouble because I know we talked about the, the use and what it looks like, but when I'm out on like Patterson and 68th Street at the Amazon facilities, is that what we're talking about? Because like, those things are, one, way out in the countryside. And two, completely hidden behind like 15-foot berms. So, if like from the road, you can barely see that the, the facilities are there. So, different than that Ninth Street location, but is that the type of facility that those particular applicants are looking to construct?
That, they wanna be, they want that to be available. They are able to attract that user, but there is just.
So, it is that level of intensity, that type of use?
Could, could be. Yeah, the fulfillment, distribution fulfillment center would be like an Amazon.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that, I think, I wasn't at this meeting. I had to tend to illness in the family, but I, I think it was really prudent of Trustee Chapman to bring our attention to these issues.
Well, one of the things he mentioned that if you can't find anything on the health aspects of how to directly address that issue, he did mention maybe we could craft language that would prohibit it from abutting like R3, R4, R5.
Yeah.
And that might be a way of addressing it.
Yeah, that might be where we land, but I'll probably bring it back up to you in October when I've had some time.
Okay.
I mean, I researched it and I came up with 11 criteria that seem to be best practice so far, but I didn't see anybody talking about health consequences and where you locate these so much.
Maybe you can provide a little more insight into how that went at the meeting, but this applicant that's interested in this change as property does not abut the residential property that was being, or does it?
One of the properties they have optioned abuts.
It does, okay. I was just trying to understand if this specific project would be problematic or if it was just the potential for future problems.
And we tried not to. Jim probably said it till he was blue in the face, we're not looking at a specific project.
No, I understand, I understand.
These provisions apply, yeah, district-wide.
Okay, I just wanted to understand in that specific instance if that was abutting.
Trustee Chapman had some very thoughtful comments and concerns that he voiced, and I asked for, I told him I agreed, I asked for time to look into it closer.
Cool, appreciate it.
And then, item B is canceling our September 26, 2024 meeting due to the MAP conference.
Do we need them to move to do that, or just, will we just not publish the notice?
I think they'll publish a notice that it's canceled.
They'll publish notice, cancel.
But we don't have to, do we have to act to do this, or you guys?
You're here, so mine's fine.
Yeah, it would be nice to have something on the record.
All right, then I move to cancel the September 26, 2024 meeting of the planning commission.
We have a motion, do we have support? Uh, motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Meeting's canceled.
And then, yeah, and one other item, just to give you a heads up. The public notice is going out in the mail tomorrow, but you will have a public hearing on September 12th of your first mixed-use district proposal. And the way the ordinance is written, the first step is mandatory concept plan review, and it is a public hearing, which I think is fantastic language because you don't wanna get to the next step, have already negotiated with the developer, and then this is the first time the public's seeing it. So, they feel like you've already made the decision. So, I like that your ordinance that you crafted requires this public hearing, and there'll be another public hearing at the next step. But, so the notice is going out, and I'll tell you, it's the land east of West Side Medical, where the Subaru's going. It's 48 acres.
Oh, yeah.
It goes back and grabs residential land between the Buckham Highlands and Sky King neighborhoods, going over to Country Club Village, and that's where I expect the crowd to come from, probably is Country Club Village, because it's gonna be using those, one of those outlets. It's been there for 60 years for this very purpose, but people get used to those outlets not.
Turn into their own personal basketball courts and park lots.
But I think this is really gonna benefit that community if this project happens because, you know, Anna and I have been meeting with them, and we want the streets to be public.
It's crazy that they have one point of access back there, basically.
They'll have a much safer way to get in and out, quicker way too, to get in and out of their neighborhood. They're not gonna get the cut-through traffic. They're just gonna have, they will benefit.
They're gonna be the cut-through trip.
So, Anna, Anna Horner, the Public Work Director, and I are gonna put together a presentation on connectivity of neighborhoods and why it's important. We're gonna start the meeting with that, and then, we'll have the hearing on this project.
Okay. That'll be great.
What is Country Club Village? I can't remember.
It's the Lodge Lane.
Behind Eaton Allen.
10th Street, south of West Main.
Oh, oh, okay. I did not know that there was a name for that neighborhood. Very good.
They like that, I mean, it's quiet, I guess. And they, you know, there's been development proposals over the years there. Jim and I have sat through some contentious meetings, and they said they liked that it was one way in, one way out because it deterred crime. But then, they would talk about speeding on Lodge Lane. I'm like, well, if there's one way in and one way out, it's your neighbors. It's you are speeding down your own roads.
We have met the enemy and.
Yeah.
Looked him right in the eye. Yeah, that neighborhood goes back a long time and has an interesting history. All the way back to redlining.
Oh.
Does?
Back to what?
Redlining, federal, yeah.
That neighborhood's that old?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen some of the deeds out of there you wouldn't want.
Uh-uh, don't read that stuff. Stay away from those restrictions.
It's pretty nasty stuff.
Okay. Duly noted.
Yep.
All right, anything else?
Nope, not for me.
If not, we are adjourned at 6:40.
Thank you. Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.